Agenda, Dr. Young.
Yes, Madam Chair, on the agenda states that the board will adjourn until September 9th. Actually, the board will be adjourned until September 2nd for the CARES Act work session. So that is a typo on the agenda.
September 3rd, yes.
September 3rd. September 3rd, that's correct, September 3rd.
Do we have a motion to amend the agenda to correct that?
Move to amend the agenda to say the adjourn date, adjourn until date to be September 3rd at 6:30 in the boardroom.
Roger.
Yes.
That's what it says.
Any second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Public comment, comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come to the podium and give public comment?
Oh, can't hear me, okay, that's better. I was wondering why you're looking at me. No. I've tried all avenues to acquire internet service and phone services at my new home. Don't have been in there three years. I couldn't get Verizon to come out and put a landline in. That's first off. I tried to get cable. My neighbors to the left of me and the right of me have cable. I can't get it. They want $4,800 to run it to my house. I tried to get good cell reception. In order to do that, I'd have to put a tower in my front yard that'd be over 100 feet at a cost of over $5,000 to me. This is the 21st century. We need to bring King George into it. I currently have satellite internet. I have a few superlatives that I could say about it. However, it's inefficient and costly. You all have computers in front of you. If you pull up a news clip, a 30-second news clip, it buffers with this satellite. They tell you you have 20, 25 meg download speed. Well, yeah, that is kind of true. Except they don't explain to you about the lag time that causes the buffering. My wife and many of her coworkers are frustrated with the slow speeds and inability to transfer files efficiently. She is now working from home. She uses over 30 MiGs within three to four days just because of the type of work she does. Then we add students that are in this county that don't have internet service. What are they supposed to do? I understand you're giving out, well, not you, but I understand they're being given hotspots. But still, that slows down services to everybody in the county. The internet is no longer a luxury, it's a necessity. More, it's more of a utility, work, school, banking, correspondence, shopping, entertainment, and much more that we do on the internet. I could go on, but I'm limited in time. I'd like to know what the county is planning on doing to resolve some of these shortcomings. At the rate things are moving, we'll have a colony on Mars before we have reliable internet service here in county. Thank you for your time, and I'd like to find where I could find out what you're doing to follow up on some of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else like to speak? Is there anybody online, Mr. Dines?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any written correspondence to members of the board? Ms. Cupka?
Yes, excuse me. Madam Chair, yes, I do. I, as well as a few others of us on the board, are, I am in receipt of an email from Mr. Adam Simonoff dated August 26, 2020, which he requested be entered into the record of tonight's meeting. The email is regarding the Wayside Park VDOT land mitigation, and I have provided that email to the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cupka. Is there any other correspondence? All right. With that, we'll move to reports from members of the board. Mr. Stonehill.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan, thank you for coming out. I know it's a, this is an issue for a lot of people here in King George. That is my district down there. If you could go on the county website and shoot me an email with your contact information, I will follow up with you and give you some more ideas and things that are in the works for internet. But it's a, it's a big issue. We know that. So if you would, just reach out to me and I'll keep you up to date the best I can. Okay, great, thank you. Let's see, August 24th, I attended a VACO Agriculture Steering Committee virtually and listened in to see how they were, other counties and everything were dealing with all the COVID and what was going on in Richmond having to do with agricultural. The 25th, I'm, and Dr. Young and Ms. Bender attended the Fredericksburg Chamber of Commerce First Responders Breakfast, which was held up at the Expo Center. Good times had, a lot of good things there, great people. And I just wanted to send out my congratulations once again to our very own King George Sheriff's Office with Detective Massey, Detective Sergeant Massey, Detective Woodring, and Detective Patterson, who received the Excellence in Criminal Investigation Award for their work on a past case here in King George. And also, King George Fire Rescue received a Business and Innovation Award for some of their cutting-edge technology that they've been working with. And I did not know, and we, which we all now know, that they have some mobile ultrasound units that are on each shift for helping with patients. The 26th, they attended a joint meeting with the school board with the rest of my colleagues here, where we spoke about the CARES Act spending. And then on the 27th, Mrs. Cupka, Dr. Young, and I met with Captain Copeland, who is the new CEO of Base down in Dahlgren, and spoke to, spoke to him, of course, about traffic and other King George Navy slash related issues, and trying to keep in good, good spirits with those guys to continue working with them. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Ms. Cupka?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Ryan, I too am your supervisor. I am the at-large supervisor. So please, when you send the email to Mr. Stonehill, please copy me on it as well. I feel your pain. I stayed home from my day job for an extra couple of hours on Friday morning to call the King George County Schools Help Desk because we were provided with a MiFi box, and, and I so appreciate their assistance, but it turned out the MiFi box we were provided with, my family was provided with, to allow my two high school students to connect, to learn virtually, had not been activated by Verizon Wireless. So they found a solution for me as far as my school students go. But you're absolutely right, we now have an overload of what available network we have with students now telelearning, teachers teleteaching, if they've been allowed to do that, and lots of folks teleworking as well. So I too share your concerns. I will mention a few things that this board has been doing recently to try to address the issue during the rest of my report. So thank you very much for coming out. On Wednesday, August 19th, participated in my, with my colleagues in the joint hearing of the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, during which the event venue special exception permits for Landino Barn and Back Porch Vineyard were approved. I would note that Back Porch Vineyard is hosting their grand opening this Saturday, September 5th, from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. On Wednesday, August 19th, myself, Mr. Stonehill, and Dr. Young met with Captain Copeland to discuss his vision for his new command, our vision for the county, and how we might work together for the mutual benefit of both. We discussed the broadband connectivity issues we are facing for students trying to telelearn, teachers trying to teleteach, and his employees trying to telework using broadband infrastructure well below the capacity needed for success. We also pitched Mr. Stonehill's idea regarding a fishing pier, which we will discuss later this evening, on this evening's agenda. We have received correspondence returned from Representative Whitman's office to indicate that they are working on a legislative fix to attempt to resolve our request to the Federal Communications Commission to access the schools' E-rate fiber network. We have also received a response from Senator Warner and have a call with his staff later this week. I want to thank Dr. Young, Mr. Dines, and Mr. Convoy again for their continued to work, for their continued work on the fiber map and for their support of this endeavor. Yesterday, the USDA announced that the summer food service program would be extended through December 31st, 2020, as long as funding remains available from Congress. Several of us requested Representative Whitman support this during his weekly telephone calls during the summer. And in late July, he sent correspondence to USDA to support the extension of the program. I recalled the five years I spent volunteering with King George Summer Lunch Bunch and told him firsthand of the need here in our community. I am grateful to him for his support and to the USDA for their decision. I spoke to Dr. Benson about this yesterday, and he indicated that as soon as the Division receives the updated guidance from the state, because the program is administered on the state level, they would be ready to resume seamless meal service. Thank you to our schools as well, as I know this will keep some of our bus drivers and food service workers employed. You can find more information regarding the extension of that program online. I want to thank Dr. Benson and all his employees at every school, especially the IT staff at the Help Desk, for executing a first day of virtual instruction yesterday. I know there are both compliments and complaints. I appreciate students, their families, and teachers for their continued patience and grace as we try to adjust to the times and circumstances in which we find ourselves. And lastly, I am requesting consensus of the board to direct staff to send correspondence to Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation in support of a study of the Lower Rappahannock River, including the portion that passes through our jurisdiction, in order that the General Assembly might adopt the Lower Rappahannock River into its Virginia Scenic Rivers Program. This is the 50th anniversary of the program, and more information can be found online. I previously sent this request to my colleagues last week after having sent a request to Dr. Young to direct staff to review what the procedures are, how to get DCR to take a look at our section, and if there was any cost that we would have to incur for requesting this study. So I would ask my colleagues for support, consensus tonight for the correspondence to be sent to DCR.
One other thing with that, I spoke to the person who's in charge of the Friends of the Rappahannock, and he had said that there was no cost, the locality for this, to get the study done, to see if we could add it on to that. So what is the consent, do I have a consensus from the board then?
Agreed.
All right, all right. Thank you, Ms. Cupka.
Thank you very much. That's all I have tonight, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the 26th, I attended the joint meeting with the school board. But that, that's pretty much as far as a report. But I'd like to address Mr. Brian's comments. Thank you for coming out tonight, sir. And you asked, what is the county doing? What we are doing is, right now, as Ms. Cupka mentioned earlier, we're looking into accessing the school's fiber. But that is going to take legislative action. There were strings attached to the grant that put that infrastructure in place, and that's how we have to work around it. So the board has given direction to county staff. A letter was drafted, sent to our lawmakers, federal and state, for support. And like Ms. Cupka spoke to earlier, we're moving forward with that, see if some legislative action can be taken so we can access that. Hopefully, that has a short term and can happen pretty rapidly. As far as planning, we're actually engaged in the All Points Broadband Dominion Energy and Northern Neck Electric Cooperative right now with other counties. King George County was very aggressive in this program. I believe the baseline was 300 and something.
$345,000.
$345,000, thank you, Dr. Young, to participate with surrounding localities. King George County agreed to put in $500,000, and the reason we did that was absolutely strategic. We want to get done first, and that's to be able to address the needs. So that, that's what the county is doing as far, as far as that. But basically, with Verizon and Atlantic, whatever the heck they're called, they're private companies. County government cannot direct a private entity to expand their business into the county. We can make things more attractive, which is what we've done with KGI, and, you know, allowing for space on our water towers and working with them. And I saw that they're going to be expanding into Oakland Park, so I'm looking forward to that. You know, they're, they're a local company, a good, good-run company, and, but there's costs associated with everything for, for services. So that's where we're all with that. The bottom line is, all our infrastructure is experiencing overload right now with the schools, teleworking, because that's not how the system was meant to be. That is not normal. I know there's talk about a new normal in this country. I don't buy into that. I'm looking forward to getting things open. I'm looking forward to our students not having to sit in front of a laptop in their kitchen and to be able to get back into schools and receive an in-person education. That's the goal. That's the normal to get back to. The normal is to get people back into their offices, back into work. That's what we're, what we need to shoot for. So it's not a matter of if and waiting things out to see if we're going to get back to normal. It's how are we going to get back to normal, and that's what we need to, to get to working on. So thank you very much. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Mr. Granger?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Ryan, thank you for coming to speaking. Mr. Bush, I think summed up pretty well. The only thing I would add on to that was with the public-private partnership, which would be between Dominion Power, the Northern Neck Co-op, All Points Broadband, and the localities that participate. The idea would be they would come in with the idea of serving citizens who do not, do not currently have broadband available. So the idea wouldn't be to try to go into places that already have Atlantic broadband available. The idea would be to try to reach those people who don't, which is identified as 25 megabits down and 3 megabits up speed. So it's not like you should be worried that that program would be just meeting the same, the needs for the same set of people. It's not really about making competition against an existing company. It's about helping those people who don't currently have that service. I'm sorry, no, sir, this, this is not a conversation. You're welcome to, to email me or any of my colleagues. I just want to add that clarification on, but apologies, at this point, it's not a back and forth. But please feel free to contact me or any of my colleagues, and we can then set up a time to talk, or after the meeting even. Other than that, on Wednesday, August 19th, I also attended the Joint Planning Commission meeting for the Back Porch and Landino properties for their special exception permit. On Wednesday, August 26th, I attended the CARES Act funding meeting with the school board, with my colleagues as well. I think both those went very well, and I appreciate both those, both the school board and the Planning Commission working with us to meet with us to get those things done. Other than that, the only thing I want to do is, this isn't really on our agenda, but it's something that's been in my mind recently with the idea about the old courthouse. And I know that we're looking, obviously, at the bond and pulling a bond for finding the funds for doing the, the building of that new courthouse. And the question would be, what are we going to do with the old courthouse? And I know Dr. Young and some of our, my colleagues here on the board have talked about the need for more staff space. And how do we go about doing that? And the old courthouse could be used for that. But obviously, the big challenge is, is that there's problems in regards to mold. And so what we need to do is, you know, a study or have a company come in and do an analysis to really give us a heads up. But if we wait till the courthouse is built, I, I just, I personally have some concerns that we are going to outgrow our own space before that time. And so I'd like to try to see if we could double up and see if my colleagues would be willing to entertain. We don't have to decide tonight, but think about it, and we could talk about it at the next meeting, or we can decide tonight about maybe doing an RFI to find out costs for doing an analysis of that building to find out what would need to be done, with the idea maybe even being to say, hey, you know, let's try to roll that all into one bond. Rates are really good right now. Hopefully, it wouldn't be an outrageous amount of money. Obviously, we'd have to wait to hear what they would say, and then, you know, that might dictate what we end up doing, obviously. But, you know, I think it would behoove us to maybe understand what we need to do with the courthouse sooner than later. So.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I understand what Mr. Granger's saying. I tend to agree with him. However, I would like to wait at least till the next meeting, only so we can get a progress report from our Infrastructure Advisory Committee. I know they've been doing great work. They've been actually visiting some of the sites throughout the county and talking with people and forging a plan. And I think the courthouse is, well, I know the courthouse is one of those facilities that they're looking into. So I know we tasked them with coming back with a recommendation over the properties for potential use or potential disposal or liquidation, whatever. So I would like to at least get a feeling of where they are right now. But that, that's where I'm at. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Cupka?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my understanding, how we left that conversation, was that, Dr. Young, you are actually presenting that to the Economic Development, you're doing a presentation before the Economic Development Authority next week regarding that. Is that correct?
Regarding the $22 million bond that covers the new courthouse.
Yes.
Only.
Right. And so, sorry, and I should have clarified how I asked that. So then that leads me to, does what we're talking about now potentially alter the discussion you might already have in mind for next week's Economic Development Authority meeting?
I believe that it could potentially, because if I go back to Cal Louts tomorrow and say, hey, look, I've spoken with the board, and they want us to actually look at getting a larger bond that takes care of not just the new courthouse, but also the old courthouse. I don't know if that's going to change what type of bond that he needs in order to get that amount of money. So it could potentially change. So I do believe that this is, I do feel a little sense of urgency. However, Mr. Bush is absolutely correct. With the Infrastructure Advisory Committee, they have been doing a lot of work to include taking a look at the old courthouse, however, excuse me. But Chris Clark is here today, and he has been a staff member that has been liaising with the Infrastructure Advisor Committee. And I think he has a strong handle on their thought process regarding the old courthouse. And if the board will entertain, I would love to invite him up to the podium, and he could give us some thoughts on where that committee is regarding the old courthouse.
Chris, I appreciate you coming up. I've spoken to a couple of members of the committee, and, and they've, they're very enthusiastic. And they've told me they've brought outside experts to come in and look at some of the properties. So, Mr. Clark?
Yes, we, we hit a little delay through the start of COVID, so we did not meet in March, April, March and April. I want to say we met virtually in May, which was the first day. They went through all the properties in the county. I worked with Cal Convoy and Community Development to get a list of everything that we own, whether it's the county, the schools, or the Service Authority. They have a very complete notebook. We did not print them every detailed report on every wellhouse and pump station. But if it's a piece of property, two acres or bigger, pretty much, they have a piece, they have information on it. They then rated all of the properties as one, two, or three, like Barnesville Park, three. Clearly, we're not going to do anything with Barnesville Park. We're not going to get rid of that. King George High School, three. We're not going to do anything with King George High School. They rated some properties a two that we have not gotten to yet, and then there were some urgent need ones. So we looked at the old middle school. We have toured that facility. They have a lot of questions, but opportunities they see there. Including, that's one of the facilities they actually, we brought in a roofer to come in and inspect the roof. And he found, that roofer's findings was that the roof is actually in much better shape than some of the stories tell, and that it's missing, that with some preventative maintenance that we still need to add now, and try not to overburden general properties, but if we can get some of that, the gutters cleaned and things there, that that roof actually is in much better shape. And then when I thought back through and making all the tours, it makes sense, because the only place I've ever seen water in the building is in the cafeterias on the back and in the gymnasium. So if that roof was as bad as some of the stories are, you would think we would find water in more of the building. They have toured the old courthouse, we went through the current courthouse with Mr. Mason. And again, they have a lot of ideas. Not, we haven't really come to consensus on these things. They've come to the ideas and thrown out a lot of ideas, but they're very interested in the idea of using that building for some other, other options going forward. And they've also looked at, we went through, last month, went through the school board building and the preschool.
Chris, Chris, the question the board has is, what are the ideas that the committee has on the old courthouse? Can you give us a quick, quick review of some of these ideas that they're discussing? And maybe some potential uses that the committee is taking a look at?
Specifically on the courthouse, they, there was discussion of expanding the museum, whether it would be to knock the wall out between the current museum and the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, or to relocate the museum within the facility. Moving economic development and tourism out there and having a standing tourism-type office, possibly partnering with the chamber, including having maybe some dedicated space for the chamber, so they have an office to go to and a place to have meetings, so we're not bouncing them through different county facilities like we do. They had me review, and I, we didn't, I've not presented to them yet, the space needs for all of the departments. So different, I asked each department and constitutional officer, what, you know, what do you anticipate needing in the next five years? So some of them said, hey, maybe I need one more office. I anticipate having one more employee. Now, obviously, that's all budget-dependent, and what you all approve at certain points. But if, take, for example, the Treasurer's Office might have said, and this is all, this is all conjecture, may have said, hey, I may need one more person, and in doing that, we would need this much more space. Then is there relocation space within Revercom, or would there be, would that be, they be the ones to move out to the courthouse? So that, that we haven't gotten into, but that information we have to give to them.
Any discussion about the state of the building? Because I know that there's been some concern from the courts about mold and analyzing that situation.
There, there definitely is some need for, again, probably very soon, some more remediation. It doesn't look, some of the things are solved. The night we actually toured the courthouse, it was raining at the end of the meeting. So when we left, the interesting concern was that the drain pipes that come off the building run within about a foot of the parking lot, but they don't run all the way to the parking lot. So the water comes off the roof, down the gutters, out to the end of those pipes, and then seems to make its way back to the building, rather than going somewhere else. And if there's a fix or a way to reroute that water once it comes off the back of the building. But that was, that was something they noted, actually after the meeting, so it wasn't actually part of the actual meeting notes.
I would like to hear more from, I mean, talking to a few members, and I met them just randomly in places of business. They seem very enthusiastic, and they got some really good members. We did very well appointing who we did on the committee. And I know the need for it, but I also want to make sure that we give them the chance to come up with an idea without spending a lot of money, because from what I understand, Mr. Clark, some of those people, they have a lot of connections with people that have given their services to come look at our buildings. And, you know, without the county having to pay a cost for that, as I've always said, it's really good. We have so many smart people in this community, we could use their services, and they like to give back, especially retired people. As I know the need, but maybe giving them a little bit more time to come and give us their plan, maybe accelerate their end date, instead of being the end of the year, maybe make November 1st being their end date. But I understand that also hurts trying to find the extra money and sort of like catch 22. It's an idea that just, it's time-sensitive. Dr. Young?
Yes, Madam Chair, and I definitely appreciate the committee's hard work. Always love volunteer investment, appreciate volunteer investment in the county's concerns. But given the sensitive, the time-sensitive nature of the discussion, I wouldn't want to, us to remain at, you know, the time and priorities of the committee. I think that if the board wanted to go ahead and move forward, or would even consider utilizing the courthouse as an auxiliary building for the staff, I would highly advise that you all probably take staff's recommendation. And that is that, you know, understanding those uses, those are great, you know, museum and, you know, our tourism office. But the reality is, administration is growing, and we're growing faster than we have space. And if we're going to be able to And if we're going to be able to maintain a staff that can keep up with the pace of the county's growth and business, we're going to need the facility to be able to accommodate that staff. And Mr. Granger is absolutely right. This is exactly the time to strike while the iron is hot. Since we're already pursuing a bond, interest rates are low and we can definitely get a bundle to take care of both buildings and get it done as cheap as possible as, as the market is going to allow us to, to address the issue.
I'll let my colleagues in a second. My only comment on that, it goes back to the very beginning and when I did the infrastructure plan, is that there's a problem in that building and we need to have somebody come and address why is that water getting in there? Why is the mold getting there? And how do we remedy that if we want to save the building to use it for county staff? So that still has to be factored into the equation. And you know that I was one of the people that was not for the committee and wanted to have something done right away. And I'm actually applauding them right now. So that, it comes from a big step of, you know, they're doing a good job. But I understand the needs and I'll let my colleagues give. Mr. Granger first and then I'll go down the line.
I just want to say real quick, I don't think it would be necessarily co-opting the committee's opportunity to present that information. I think you summed it up perfectly, the idea that building needs to be analyzed. And so that's what I, that's really kind of what my purpose in bringing this dialogue up now was to say, let's try, I think we should maybe move forward with trying to do the analysis period sooner than later. And then even if the committee comes back and then says, hey, we think we should do this and we end up going with that, we need to know that that building can, can be used in that way. And so I think it's something that needs to be done, either if it's county staff going in there or if it's, it's, you know, expanding the museum or any other ideas that the committee comes up with. That information is something we're going to need to do for any of those options. And so I, that's what I was trying to say. I think we should maybe move forward, try and figure out, what do we need to do for this building and seeing if we can do that now?
I got you. Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I want to, I'd like to put a little pause on this for a minute in that we still have the old middle school. And there was discussions previously about the school board's current building and maybe relocating them and some county offices there. There are so many varying scenarios out there that I don't want to make a rush to failure in saying we're going to identify one property, you know, for such a purpose. I just want to remind everybody that we are $1.3 million in debt to ourselves before the next budget and that's before we obligate $1. So I understand interest rates. However, everything is relative. So interest rates are lower now, home assessments are probably going to be lower. When the economy comes back up, interest rates go up, home assessments go up. It's all relative. I don't want to go ahead and obligate a bond when we're potentially facing a recession. Revenues are short next year. The state is already short, which means we're probably going to see a lot more unfunded mandates because the state's not going to discontinue services or regulations it has, but it's still going to be an obligation of the county. We have to pay for all that and we don't know how. We don't know what we're working with. Now, we've done a thorough study of the courthouse. We understand that we need a new courthouse now. It's very proactive and fiscally responsible to pull the bond now with the lower interest rates because we know exactly what it's for. We can articulate to the taxpayer, yes, this is what we're doing with your tax dollars. This is exactly what we're doing. I would not want to pull a bond, an excessive bond, and we still don't have a plan just because interest rates were lower. I would like to tackle everything in an efficient way and know exactly what we're going to do. So I would like to hear back from, from the Infrastructure Advisory Committee. Now, if that means expediting their, their findings, like Ms. Bender suggested, if they can, if that, they still have time to be able to present us something of merit, I'm fine with that. And then we just need to go ahead and make a decision and then we can execute. Then we can pull a bond. We can do that as long as we have a plan. I just, I'm very hesitant on obligating money for something that's still in a hypothetical status, given all that. That, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Kupka?
So I don't believe I received really an answer to my question. All I want to know is, does this in any way change? Do you need something more from us, Dr. Young? Or are we going to proceed the way that we had consensus when we met regarding this matter? Was it last meeting or last month? So that you can go before the EDA next week? You're good?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
As of the moment, if the board had a consensus saying, hey, well, we don't want to do anything with the courthouse. We just simply want to focus on the $22 million bond for the new courthouse, then we don't need any additional information.
Right. That's perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Stonehill?
I think I have to agree with Mr. Bush this time and, and kind of hold off. I mean, with our economic and money shortcomings and everything, I'd certainly like to see what the advisory group has. I mean, they're there for a reason. I definitely want to hear what they have to say. I understand interest rates are very low, but I, I just think we're not, we're not there yet. I don't really think that we're, we're ready to, to start getting into that.
Thank you. Mr. Granger, again?
Yes, ma'am. I don't know if I articulated myself poorly and if I did, I apologize. I guess my intention isn't, I think Mr. Bush had a fair point. It may sound like, and I kind of was saying that I want to move forward, just taking more money out to make this project happen. More what I was looking for is to better understand that building. Because at some point, we're going to need to understand that building. We've all talked about, hey, we can't just let our old buildings just crumble away and die. And we need to at least understand, what do we need to do to at least maintain this? And that's more what I'm interested in trying to find out. Looking at this building and saying, all right, there might be a mold issue somewhere. Is there a part of it that needs to be demolished? If there's not any part that needs to be demolished, is there anything that, any remediation that needs to be done to address mold so that it doesn't continue to grow or new mold grow? And so that's kind of the kind of activities I was thinking of. I wasn't even thinking about from the perspective of saying, let's build something new in there. I'm saying, let's try to get this building to a maintainable state. And then the committee, I'm sorry, the committee's recommendations could come through and we can move forward with that. And then, you know, that could be further down the line or county staff could get moved in. But if it's, if it's in a habitable state, I feel like even if we were in a bind, we could then start using that space in some way, in an ad hoc way, if that was the need. But, and I'm not saying we need to move forward, but I'm not talking about trying to obligate dollars. I'm just saying, maybe saying, let's put an RFI out to find out what it would cost just to have a organization come in and do an analysis of that building for us if it's overnight so that the courts aren't being impacted. But I'm, you know, then RFI is just trying to figure out, what do people think it's going to cost? And in order to that, then we can maybe put an RFP out if we thought, hey, that seems reasonable and we'd like to move forward with that.
Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
Given what Mr. Granger just said, I can agree with that. But it also made me think a little more to what Mr. Clark said about cleaning out the gutters. If we're going to do that, I'd like to see a maintenance plan for, for some of our facilities, including the schools. You know, are the gutters being cleaned out? Is it something so simple as that that could prevent water from coming in the cafeteria or the gym? You know, so even if we're not going to use these spaces, we should at least maintain these properties so that when we do go to utilize them or we go to do something with it, it hasn't degraded over a 10-year period. It's at least been maintained to its current state so we're not starting even further behind the curve ball. So given what Mr. Granger just said, I can go along with, with his request.
Well, I have a suggestion at the very end, but I agree. I've, I've been pushing preventive maintenance ever, ever since I've been on the board. And from what I understand, it's just maintaining roofs and we're, we're not doing that. So I was going to suggest to Dr. Young that we have some preventive maintenance plans in our CIP talks that we'll have very soon in our work sessions and ask the schools to also have preventive maintenance plans and, you know, give us an estimate. We know you have these facilities and this is what would potentially could go wrong in one, five, 10, 15 years. Put it on the CIPs to give us a heads up instead of just dumping, here's a roof, we need this much, and that's the only thing on there. There, there are buildings, there are costs, there are preventive maintenance costs. They should be in that CIP every year. So that is something I was going to ask you, Dr. Young, when we got there, of just telling you a little heads up ahead of time. So I will be asking you if you could have that figured into the CIP. So my just suggestion to my colleagues is what if we moved to November 1st when we would like the Infrastructure Committee to have their plan? I know they're very smart people and I'm sure they'll, they'll, they'll work really hard to have that done. And we put off, put out an RFI specifically for the courthouse in the old middle school to see what would to, potential, I guess, to, for the mold mitigation in both buildings and in the roof, you know, for those two buildings. Because those are the ones that we would be the best utilized for our problems with the schools and our county staff needs, you know, if we had to renovate those, those two buildings. And what do you guys think?
I'm in favor of having an RFI to start moving forward on this process. And then obviously, once we get that information, we're not obligating any dollars now. So then we could put the RFP out if, if we feel like it's something we could take on.
And an RFI is no cost, correct, Dr. Young, Mr. Britton?
That's correct.
And an RFI is not saying we're committing to something. We're just looking for information. It's been in the paper, it's been out there on social media, that we're interested in taking, being good stewards of our building and not keep doing past mistakes by not taking care of them.
So I'm going to make a motion to direct staff to put an RFI out for the courthouse and the old King George Middle School with the idea of looking at improving the infrastructure and the maintenance that would be required to get those buildings into a habitable state.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any ayes? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
So I know this is my board report and so I apologize for co-opting to have that discussion and I know it was kind of off the cuff. Thank you to my colleagues though for entertaining me on that. And I'll, I'll try to be more early on and provide that information. It was something I really thought about today. So, but thank you, everyone. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Granger.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Stonehill.
While we're still on this, Dr. Young, if it's just as simple as getting someone up on the roof or as Mr. Clark said, you know, extensions on the gutters to save some of these buildings a little bit, especially with the amount of rain that we've been having, you know, maybe get with Mr. Muncie and get those guys up on the roof to get gutters cleaned and even just those rollout extensions to get the water away from the building. If Mr. Clark said that, it's, you know, the water's coming back in there, just, you know, something as simple as that in the time being.
Roger, sir. We're having a discussion about preventive maintenance and I thought that I conveyed it before, but we do have a robust maintenance program for our county facilities. These mentioning some roofs and deteriorated facilities aren't really county facilities. We have the old middle school, but we actually inherited it in that condition. We have, our General Properties Department is daily actively engaged in the preventive maintenance of, of the county facilities. Just two days ago, they were power washing the Rivercombe building, going out to the Citizen Center. They are actively engaged in ensuring that our facilities are cared for. This discussion regarding the drainage of the water not fully making it to the parking lot and back in, and it's coming back into the old courthouse, was not aware of that. And we're definitely going to take a look at getting somebody out there to extend that drainage. I think that's pretty easy and that's something that we could take there relatively cheaply and relatively quickly. But I will have a discussion with Mike. I know that they're checking roofs, but I'll, I'll have a conversation with him and say, hey, we talked with the board last night, given the increase in the weather and the rain, we're, we're going to escalate the review of the gutters and rooftops.
Well, I know, I would like, like a checklist or something. I mean, we never see it, so, so if you don't see it, you don't know it exists. So maybe sending out a report to the board twice a year, something about what's our preventive maintenance plan for our buildings. And concerning the old middle school, I know we inherited it from the school board. But what I see in the CIP as a problem is, is we don't see that one, five, 10, 15 year from the schools. I mean, it's, we as supervisors, we allocate the money. They come to us and tell us what they need and then we allocate the money. So it does come to us. So we need to see a forecast of what these repairs are and what we need. We only see when it's an immediate need. We need a little bit, I don't know if my colleagues agree, we need a little bit more information. We need to see foresight. And I, I've been saying this for quite a while. But with that, Mr. Stonehill? Do you have anything else on your, right? Thank you. Now my board report. I'll try to keep it short. Mr. Ryan, I understand your concerns. I am another one of those people who doesn't have the best internet contacted, our road members contacted Atlantic Broadband, Metrocast before that, and we're going to charge $27,000 to bring the, that line down. They are a private business. They can charge what they want. I had to get one of those MiFi hotspots today because we were trying to do it through the phone and it didn't work. My daughter was getting very frustrated for two days. She kept getting kicked off the internet and she's a very perfectionist and it was quite anxiety for her to constantly keep, and she didn't hear what the teacher was saying. And it really bothered her and I'm sure there's a lot of other students that are like that, that, you know, it really is hard for them to learn in that manner when they're used to routine and the way they do any, do things. And the teachers are trying really hard and I have to comment and commend the Potomac teachers, this fifth grade staff, is they understand when the kids get kicked off and you just chat with them and they say, hey, we'll be back online at 2:00. And if you missed anything, we'll go over it. When they've been really good in those two days. My daughter's been one that keeps coming on to ask for assistance, but she's not the only one. So I really commend the staff and what they're, we're doing and we understand the needs. And there's just no, what I'm trying to say is there's no easy fix unless we were the money fairy and had lots and lots of money to dole out to put the fiber all over the county. But we don't, especially as a, as a county government that relies on taxes. And we have so many needs and we're doing the best we can and, and we're trying to look at all avenues, but there's just no quick and easy fix to it. And, and that's regrettable, but it's what we have, but we're trying our best to get it and we, we have options that we're pursuing. I went to, majority of the functions my colleagues have already mentioned, but I want to give a shout out at the first responders dinner to, to the sheriff's office and our county fire and EMS where there are wars. It was a very nice presentation and the videos were nice. I had spoke to Mr. Allwine about getting them for us, but I think they were a little too large to send to me to show here because you would have appreciated what our, our public servants have, have done and the achievements that they have been honored with by the, our region. And I commend them. And I also want to thank all of our staff for all they've been doing this whole time during COVID. That includes the schools, the general properties, our treasurer, registrar, everybody, community development. I know they've been seeing a lot more uptake. And where I'm getting here is, as many know, I've been, I've traveled a bunch up north to take care of my father's affairs. And I spoke to a Realtor up there and she said she can't stop her business. It's just overflowing. It's from people escaping the cities now to go into, live in a more rural atmosphere. And so I anticipate they're going to be starting to come here in a little bit. And so those, that infrastructure is going to be taxed a little bit and, and community development is going to be a little more busy coming real soon because no matter what they tell you, they're moving. Because I spoke to a Realtor in that area and where I grew up is very rural, believe it or not, in New Jersey. But they're moving from the city to those areas that are in Pennsylvania, New York, New Jersey and coming down south because renting a truck was really hard because everyone's taking them. And the first thing they ask you is what southern state are you going to? So they're coming and, and, you know, bother to what, we got to be prepared for growth that'll probably be coming, especially with the new bridge. And that being said, I will conclude my report. I move now for a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion though for, sorry. Any ayes? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next up, Constitutional Officers' report.
None, Madam Chair.
All right. Mr. Britton, report from the county attorney, delinquent accounts update.
Just one, that one thing. We went ahead and executed the contract with tax, and they've been in contact with the constitutional offices and the other departments, and especially with Mr. Weekly at the service authority. And he is, at this point, trying to figure out the best way to get his billing system, I think it's called muni billing, working symbiotically with either the bright system or whatever other system tax can, can handle. And so, but it is up and running, and they've had several meetings already, so hopefully those several hundred accounts will be whittled down in the near future. Although there may be some, some issues resulting from the COVID-19 and people not being able to pay various accounts, I think that hits utilities hardest, so that's why it's important to get it up and running. But everything that the board wanted accomplished, I think by executing that ord, ordaining that ordinance happened, and it was very quick because of the bright system or AS400 system. So we'll report back on, on how well it goes, how many cases get just a letter, how many, what the process is, and what, if any, go to court, and we'll give you at least a biennial snapshot.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Britton? Mr. Stonehill?
Mr. Britton, the, the delinquent accounts, that's not going through muni billing, that's coming directly from tax.
Yes. Muni bill, muni billing is what the service authority uses to send out bills. They don't handle a collection of delinquent accounts. I guess they just send out the bills, and then from now on, it got up to about 550, but from now on, we'll, we'll say who didn't pay the bills as well. And then that, after the county and the service authority have made the attempts to contact the people, determine whether they're what's called an active customer or inactive customer and what have you, whether they've moved out or are deceased or whatever reason, they may not be paying their bill, those that they feel are legitimate and of a, of an amount, which is, you know, you don't spend $10 to collect five. So of an amount that is worthwhile, they will be passed on to tax. And then they will go forward with the phone call, the letters, and those, those efforts. And as I said, out of the cases that we would expect, you would see two or three a year all actually going to court. And of course, those would be, there's, as you know, Mr. Stonehill, there's, there's two folk, kind of folks that you go after most, right? The habitual and the ones that are very large, sort of non-payers. And so that's, that's the kind that tends to, you know, the person with thousands and thousands of dollars who just keeps not paying, not paying, getting different residences, getting his services, hooking up at different residences. So sort of the habitual offenders and the very large non-payers. Of course, there can be legitimate excuses and reasons as well, and those are looked into, but that's the process, and we will report back on both collections and how fast and how much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Britton. Next up, Mr. Clark, Roseland Road property presentation from our director of Parks and Rec.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight I return to you with an additional proposal for the property at 3321 Roseland Road. 3321 Roseland, next slide, please. 3321 Roseland Road was acquired by the county as part of the mitigation for the lands lost for the Harry Nice, Thomas Mack Middleton Route 301 Bridge Project. The property is shown here as parcel 10-1-3. Next slide, please. Staff has met with members of the Ralph Bunch Alumni Association, the King George County Historical Society, and the Dahlgren Heritage Museum to develop an additional proposed use for the property as a museum. All three groups are committed to, are committed to staff the museum and work jointly. Safety and security policies would be developed, and the museum would have a set daytime-only hours currently proposed as 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Wednesday through Saturday. The museum would use the first floor for displays, the second floor would be a conference room available for rent, and the museum, and the museums and parks and recreation would share use of the basement. Next slide, please. The working group made up of county staff and volunteers from these groups recommends working with an architect to develop planning documents for utilizing tourism funds and also utilizing those funds to make renovations. The TAC has been consulted by staff, and they are receptive, receptive to this. A change of use and ADA renovations are needed. The groups and the county would also need to enter into an MOU to protect all parties and spell out the terms of the agreement. Next slide, please. For use as a museum, changes to the first floor would encompass ADA upgrades, including ramping, restrooms, and doorway adjustments. Each museum user would have dedicated space, as seen here. The Ralph Bunch Alumni Association is what was, used to be, was named by the original owner as Studio 2, the Dahlgren Heritage Museum, and what was originally Studio 1, and the King George County Historical Society, and what was the living room. The bedrooms would be used as an office and a storage room. The kitchen would remain in place but be labeled as warming use only for any small daytime events hosted by the museum. Next slide, please. In this plan, the second floor would become a mod, would be modified slightly to remove the closet wall to allow for approximately a 400 square foot conference room. This room would be available for rental as well as for use by museum groups and the Kings, and King George County for meetings. Next slide. In the basement, each group would have space to store additional artifacts and displays, which would allow for the ability to change public displays on a regular basis. In addition, parks and recreation would have access to storage space for use for future programming, either onsite or at Wayside Park. Next slide. In order to provide security and safety for, for both the site and our neighbors, automated or keypad locks would be installed to limit access to appropriate areas of the house. Security cameras would need to be installed. Appropriate fencing would be erected at the property lines in consultation with the neighbors. The walkway to the Potomac River would also need to be improved with steps and/or ramping to improve access. Next slide. As discussed at the August 4th Board of Supervisors meeting, the change of use process would have to take place, including structural and electrical inspections and updates, ADA compliance, and restroom renovation. Those items will determine the occupancy of the building. Fire rescue recommends that a fire alarm system be installed as well. So tonight, I'm not asking for any action to be taken by the Board of Supervisors. This informational item is to help prepare both the board and the public for the upcoming joint meeting or town hall on Wednesday, September 9th at 6:30 p.m. at the property. That night, the public is invited to join staff, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, the three historical groups, as well as the Board of Supervisors in providing feedback on both this plan and the event venue plan that was presented on August 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Does anybody have any questions? And I am Mr. Baird is here. Ms. Kupka?
Yes. Thank you very much for your presentation, Mr. Clark. Have the museums, the individual museums themselves provided you or your committee and/or your committee any feedback on this proposed plan?
We have met with the museums three times, might be four. We met, including virtually this afternoon. We met onsite last week, and they were very receptive. They actually picked the, the spots that they were interested in, so each group picked theirs. Ralph Bunch Alumni jumped in first and picked this, but they really were interested in that studio. The Heritage Museum liked the, the studio they picked, and the Historical Society, I think, was very receptive. Mr. Baird is here as a member of the Historical Society and could speak to that, but they all, every time we have spoken, have been very receptive and very excited about the opportunity to be able to expand their displays and expand their reach in the county.
So that leads to my next question, where it seems you probably have answered. This is in addition to their current space? Because I'm looking at this floor plan, and I cannot imagine particularly Dahlgren Heritage Museum finding this more suited for their needs than their current location on 301 that has road frontage and has a lot more space, it looks to me, than this one studio room does? Because I've been, you, you took me on a tour of the property.
Yes.
So I guess that's my question.
Yes.
Are these museums on board with this?
Yes, for, for the historical.
So this is in addition to whatever, wherever they already are?
Yes.
This would be sort of a satellite display location?
For the Historical Society and the Dahlgren Heritage Museum, they would both be additional facility space. One example they use, Mr. Gates uses is the, the heavy piece of ordinance that they have in the museum could not be put in a house and be on that floor, no matter how many upgrades we made probably to the flooring choice to make it strong. It's on a concrete floor there at the Heritage Museum. But they would be able to expand those displays and expand their reach. For Ralph Bunch Alumni, at this moment, their artifacts are in people's basements and in storage rooms, so they would have, it would be their first reach out, and hopefully in the future, there will be an additional space for them, actually, in the school.
Thank you. And then it looks to me like no matter what we plan or what we decide to do, the second floor is problematic as far as ADA compliance goes. Am I?
Correct.
Because I don't see an elevator being, I don't see us being able to do that. So that's another question that I have or concern.
Both the basement and the second floor would be ADA accessibility struggles. In our conversation with Mr. Hudson and Community Development, it was the idea that if we were to rent the space, that we at least had like space available if someone came to us and said, well, we would really like to meet on Roseland Road, but we have somebody who has accessibility needs, that we would then be able to offer them the sunroom in the kitchen as a, as a meeting space, or delay opening the museum that day and using the living room around the displays as their meeting space, or something of that nature.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have a question? Mr. Bush?
So initially, when the idea of the museums was presented for this property, I was outspoken against it. I actually like this presentation. But tonight, we had a conversation earlier about growing staff and needs. So the second floor, if you're going to have the museums there, is it possible that we could look at utilizing the second floor for office space for economic development and tourism? They would be right there with the museums, right there by Barnesfield Park, and that would free up office space in the River Cone Building. Now, that's not going to meet our growing needs over time, but immediately, that would free up a hallway. So I just think that's maybe something we could look into. I would think that the office space needs would be greater than a conference room on the river. But that's just something to consider. I'm looking forward to the town hall and seeing what citizens have to say, but it is something to, to think about as far as office space goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Mr. Stonehill? Mr. Clark, since I'm the one who originally fostered this idea, one of, one of the things, too, is the museums have spoken that they're willing to be the presence at the museum and have it only open in certain days, and Mr. Baird could talk about that, but especially for the Dahlgren Heritage Museum, they're actually going to have, and I'm on that board, so they're going to have a, they pushed up their monthly meeting date so that they can meet on September 9th to talk about it, so that they're prepared for the town hall. And they're going to have problems and access issues once the bridge comes in. So it's in other places that, not the best access, but they would have more access, and they may be able to display some of the items they have on the base at that location, not what they have in the museum, but things that go outside. And the other thing with that space, and I see it as, and it would be an amazing asset for our county, for our school students, and even down the northern neck that they can come, and they can have programs there, field trips of all age groups, and it's a way we could give back to the community. But that's, Mr. Baird, did you want to comment about the Historical Society?
Yes, ma'am, and I appreciate having the opportunity to speak just a moment. King George Historical Society frankly has not met since March because of the COVID crisis, and may have our older, members are older. However, have discussed with a few members the concepts of where we're going, but it was pretty nebulous until this last week as to where it appeared to be going. Conceptually and in reality, I believe the Historical Society is strongly in favor of this approach in having an opportunity to get additional historical artifacts reflecting the county out where people can see them. We believe that having a, a combined effort of our three historical emphasis together in one place provides more attraction to tourists and school groups and whatnot to come together to learn than our small, simple museums we have now. So I, we're very, very supportive of the concept. The one concern I do have, and the language used in the slides was a little strong, is conceptually, I totally believe that we'll do our best to try to support the manning, but until I can go back and talk to, you know, our membership to get a, a total buy-in, it's hard to say that yes, 100%, we will provide 100% staffing for the museum. I know Ralph Bunch was in a similar position. We want to do it, we want to make sure we can do it. But my goal now is to get as many people as I can to the, the open house, to get the concept out there and, and build the enthusiasm that a number of us had. I think it's a great plan.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Baird? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clark, for your presentation. Thank you, Mr. Baird. Any other questions for Mr. Clark? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next up is our public hearing. King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised to receive public input regarding case number 20-06-E02, special exception permit request made by Caroline McGee for a manufactured home in addition to the primary dwelling for occupancy by the lot owner's immediate family for reasons for hardship. Owned by Brian L. or Caroline McGee, Tax Map 33, Parcel 135F, 11.01 acre, Zoned A1, Limited Agricultural District. I will first ask for the report. I will then open the floor for public comment, and public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight depending on information received during public comment. Floor is yours.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. I am Louis Pankotti Planer, and I will be presenting case number 20-06-E02. Next slide, please. So this is a special exception request made by Carolyn McGee for a manufactured home in addition to the primary dwelling for occupancy of the lot owner's immediate family for reasons for hardship. It is owned by Brian L. or Carolyn McGee, Tax Map number 33, Parcel 135F, 11.01 acres, Zoned A1, Limited Agricultural District. Next slide, please. As you can see on this map, may bear our GIS department, the parcel outlined in yellow is located at the end of Scott Drive, just off of Route 3. Next slide, please. Parcel 135F contains 11.01 acres. This property is located along Scott Drive in the Shiloh Voting District. The additional dwelling, dwelling unit will utilize the existing driveway and will tie into the existing septic and well systems. Health Department approval has been received. Next slide. This plan does not propose any impacts to the wetlands. Tax Map 33, Parcel 135F is currently zoned, limited agricultural, or A1. The surrounding properties are also A1, limited agricultural, and mostly used as single-family dwelling lots. The current use of the property is also a single-family dwelling. Next slide. Section 2.3.3 Additional Uses Permitted Only By Special Exception lists the use of a manufactured home in addition to the primary dwelling for the occupancy of the lot owner's immediate family for reasons for hardship as a permitted use by special exception. At the August 4th, 2020 Board of Supervisor meeting, the board voted unanimously to schedule a public hearing for case number 20-06-E02 at the board, at a board meeting without a recommendation from the Planning Commission. Community development staff received the special exception application and site plan from Carolyn McGee applicant on June 6th, 2020. The application proposes a 60-foot by, or 66-foot by 16-foot single-wide manufactured home that will tie into the existing septic system. The request is made due to a hardship the applicant mothers have, has encountered from the COVID-19 pandemic. Next slide. So included in your packet is a site plan showing the existing dwelling and the additional manufactured home. The proposed location meets all zoning ordinance requirements for dwelling. Next slide, please. And also included in your packet, the applicants have submitted a letter describing the hardship the applicant's mother has encountered. Next slide. The special exception permit does have six conditions. One, the manufactured home dwelling unit will be used only by Deborah P. Coleman, mother of Carolyn McGee, as specified in the application, case number 20-06-E02. Number two, that the manufactured home dwelling unit will be removed from the property within 180 days from the date that Deborah P. Coleman no longer needs family assistance. Number three, that Brian L. and Carolyn McGee shall inform King George County Department of Community Development within 30 days of the date that Deborah P. Coleman is no longer in need of family. in need of family assistance. Next slide. Number four, that the new drain field or modification of the existing drain field will meet all Health Department requirements outlined in the letter from Steve Valentine dated May 15, 2020. Five, that any amendment to the special exception permit must be granted in conformance with the same legal procedures as required for the initial issuance of this permit. And number six, that the permit shall be recorded amongst the land records of King George County, Virginia. So finally, the Department of Community Development staff recommends that the King George County Board of Supervisors approve case number 20-06-E02, special exception permit request made by Carolyn, Carolyn McGee for a manufactured home in addition to the primary dwelling for occupancy of the lot owner's immediate family for reasons for hardship. Owned by Brian L. or Carolyn McGee, Tax Map 33, Parcel 135F, 11.01 acres, Zoned A1, Limited Agricultural District. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicants are here, should you have any questions for them.
Do we have any questions for Community Development or the applicants? Would the applicants like to come up and say anything before we open the public comment?
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to approach the board, and my name is Deborah Coleman. I live in Jarrettsville, Maryland, which is about a three-hour drive from here. I want to say first of all that I did watch the recording of the August 4 meeting at which my daughter Carolyn McGee spoke, and I want to say that I very much appreciate your concerns and your, the way that you accepted her statements. And Madam Chairwoman, also your sharing of the difficulty you had with your father as you tried to navigate him to, to the end of his life and how hard that is. I had to have surgery in February and had to be out of work. I only worked part-time, so I didn't have any pay during that time and was expecting to go back in April. But of course, everything was shut down. I do physical therapy in the home for the aged, and because all the hospitals were closed, there was no work, so I kind of went out, you know, without any work for a couple of months. But my surgery also affected my ability to sustain activity in the job that I do. It's a very physical job, being a physical therapist. So those are some of the hardships that I've had this year. But I appreciate your willingness to listen to this and hope that you'll be willing to accept this special exception. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for listening to our request, and thank you to Mr. Pankotti for all the work that he's done and your consideration in this request. I also just wanted to mention that we do have our surrounding neighbors, we do have letters from them. They aren't here tonight, but I did receive a couple texts right before the meeting, and they were hoping for positive vibes to happen, so they all are in support of this. We do have really great relationships with all of them, so I don't think there is, be any contention with it. But thank you so much for allowing us to speak, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Did you have a question? No. Yeah, I'm going to get the public com. Is anybody here in the audience that would like to give a public comment at this time? Mr. Dyance, is there anyone online?
No, ma'am, chair.
Did we have any correspondence from anybody? Nope. All right. Mr. Bush, did you want to?
So I don't think this is going to be problematic at all. I actually see this thing moving forward, but I'd be remiss if I didn't address something. So I understand the zoning, and I understand why they had to go through the special exception process. My concerns is that I don't think they should have had to go through this, and I understand it's our zoning ordinances. But for someone to produce a letter describing the hardship of the applicant's mother, 11 acres in a rural area, the permit conditions, I find, to me, and I understand Community Development was doing their job, so this is not a dig at them. This is a dig at our ordinances and the way we kind of, or the way I see things, has gone a little overboard. That the manufactured home dwelling will be used only by Deborah P. Coleman to specify who can live in the dwelling on private property, I find problematic. That the manufactured home dwelling will be removed from the property within 180 days that Deborah Coleman no longer needs family assistance. After the applicants have made improvements to the property to be able to host or to have that, that manufactured home on site, and then they have to remove it, an asset that they have to pay for, that they have to make land improvements for, that's on their private property, that's in a wooded area, I find that problematic. It, it's things like that that I think maybe our zoning ordinances or the way we do things, I think we're, we get involved in things, or government gets involved in things that maybe we shouldn't be getting involved in. I think that's a little bit ridiculous. I don't, I don't see why, I mean, somebody could put a shed, somebody could put a barn on private property if they got a farm, they, they can't, they can't do that. I just, I find that problematic. I think that's just a stretch and maybe a little invasion in a private property use. That's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Mr. Britton?
Thank you. Mr. Bush, Madam Chair, you can strike that condition. That's a condition. The zoning process is by, by code. So the law, you know, it's made in Richmond, but that's a condition that's in the special exception. So you have retained this, and the code specifically allows the board to retain any special exception permit to shorten this onerous process that you described? And you can amend and strike. This is the recommendation of staff.
Thank you for that, Mr. Britton. I'd like to move to strike permit conditions one, two, and three.
I think, Mr. Bush, if you made the motion to approve the special exception with those struck, you could make two motions to strike it, but then you'd need another motion to approve the special exception.
Well, I can't speak for my colleagues, so I'm not going to enter in a motion with the strike assumed. So I'm going to see if the strike would, would pass first. If not, ultimately, this special exception, I think, is going to pass tonight. I would just like to see if I can make it a little more respectful of private property rights and...
This runs with the land, so these are conditions, the reason that staff recommends that, in defense of the staff, the conditions is, this is a financial hardship. So typically, the board has entertained financial hardships less than, let's say, aging or long-term things, because then they can be rectified, and then the thing, the hardship goes away. So in past history, that has made financial hardships a little bit different than other, other, other special exceptions. And so that's why the board rec, or the staff, correct me if I'm wrong, recommends, recommends these, say, hey, well, when a financial hardship goes away, which hopefully it will, nobody wants to remain ever for anyone, then the special exception should go away, because special exceptions by law run with the land. However, if, if it's a property rights issue, that's just a recommended additional burden on the exception. So if it was struck, then any future homeowner would also be allowed to keep the manufactured home or replace it, or take it away.
Yep.
I just wanted to make, make that point, that this, even though it's a current hardship, it's a financial hardship, which is quite different than, in my experience, the board has generally seen, which is terminal illnesses, long-term illnesses, aging, loss of a parent, where they're moving in and you know they're going to be there, and so we don't put these types of, and then pull the house down type of a thing. But you can strike it. Sorry if I went on too long.
Well, I mean, I, I appreciate the, the, the fact that this was, this and other cases are addressed on an individual basis, and we look at the merit of the conditions and what the situation is for the property and the surrounding area on a case-by-case basis. Looking at this case and the area that it's in, and the size of the parcel, that's why I'm, I'm thinking that I would, I would move to strike permit conditions one, two, and three, as presented.
Mr. Bush, if I may, I think that Matt really does have a strong point about the special exception would run with the life of the land. If, Madam Chair, if you would entertain, if we could probably have Heather come up and just give us an explanation on why the zoning ordinance is written that way to address those three conditions, just so the board, the board is fully informed prior to, you know, making, making that decision.
Good evening. I think that there's two different issues here. Currently, our zoning ordinance only allows one dwelling per parcel of land. This reasons for hardship gives people an avenue to get that second home for special conditions, which is exactly what your special exception process is for. Like Mr. Britton mentioned, typically in the past, other special exceptions that are very similar to this are for, you know, people at their end of life, they need help, and so that, once those, those people vacate the property in some way, shape, or form, that mobile home is just that, it's mobile. It can be removed and put back into that state. But special exceptions are just that, they're not a one-size-fits-all. You have to look at the property and the situation. But if you were to strike those conditions, then I think that you should also look at the zoning ordinance and whether or not you want to remove the one dwelling per parcel of land.
Okay, so you just brought up something that I didn't understand. You said "mobile home." This says "manufactured home." Most manufactured homes are put on a foundation, correct?
So a mobile home and a manufactured home are, are the same. The way they're, are built is they are brought in on wheels, and they are put typically with the skirting around. The wheels are still there, just as they come in and out of a mobile home park, is the same mobility there. There's not a permanent foundation.
Because I've seen some manufactured homes, it doesn't look like a mobile home.
Correct. And, and the way that things are built today...
Like they're log cabins.
Right, but they still come in on wheels. They still have that mobility to come and go. Not as much as per se an RV or things of that nature, but just the way that is built on that frame has the ability to be moved. Does it take some finagling? Yes. Can it be put on a permanent fin, foundation per the building code? Yes. But this is, is a temporary home for those people with a special exception.
Okay, so that, that changes my perspective, because what I was envisioning was the property owners having to make improvements with a drain field and all this stuff, and then putting something on a foundation and then having to bear the cost of removing it, that's what I found a little more ridiculous. But this, you're saying, is a mobile?
Yes. And they are not putting in an additional well or an additional drain field, they are utilizing the ones they have with permission for that.
I withdraw, I withdraw my motion. Thank you. Totally different scenario. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bush, I can clarify, I had grandparents, both sides, that lived in manufactured trailer, you know, trailer homes, and they were dropped down and decorated and landscaped, you would have never known that they were a manufactured home. But there were wheels there, and, you know, there was fencing around, but you just wouldn't have, no, tiny houses, correct, are also in that, because they came in in wheels or...
Tiny houses are different per the building code, but that's, that's a whole other subject.
Gotcha. I just asked if, but I know I looked into this when my mom had cancer, and we were, we were pushing real hard for my dad and mom to come live with us. We looked into that, and it specified it had to be a manufactured home, and it could not be like a regular structure.
More commonly known as, as a single-wide mobile home.
Double-wide, you know.
Right, so this is specifically a single-wide, that's why the dimensions are also mentioned. They're, they're built beautifully, like you said, most people don't even know nowadays that they're...
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just would point out how, with the way this process is set up, and yes, I fully agree with you, Mr. Bush, we need to have a thorough review of our ordinances. If we just allow people, though, to put whatever they want on their property, there really doesn't seem to me then to afford us a mechanism for the Department of Health to make sure that there is adequate access to water and sewer, whether that's a private septic system or tying into our own service authority. So I would caution going too far to relax things without, because then we wouldn't have the mechanism to do, you know, to perform this kind of review to get this letter from Mr. Valentine. Other than that, I drove down there last night. You have very few neighbors. It's behind the old Southern States down there on Route 3 East, and there's not a lot going on back there. I don't see that this would be a problem at all, so I would fully support it. And thank you very much for coming out and speaking on behalf of your application.
Mr. Stonehill?
I just had a, just a question from Ms. Hall, but you clarified it, just to remind me about why we had to do this, but it was the one parcel, one house. Does it make a difference if it's ag or not? I had an elderly couple come to me a number of years ago wanting to do a house for their kids because they were getting older and they needed help, and they were told no by the previous board or a couple of boards ago. But I thought they had said because it was ag, or it was only 10 acres, or like if it was 11, it was different. I was just, I'd never really got a clear answer. I know they were just told no.
So per memory, I believe that this avenue for a special exception is only within the agricultural districts, and that's specifically because those are typically larger lot size that can, can accommodate a second dwelling.
Nothing to do with acreage? I'm just trying to, I mean, they were out in the middle of the woods, I mean, there were no neighbors anywhere around, and it was a very similar situation, and they were, you know, just outright told no, and they just never pursued it. And I'm just trying to figure out what the difference is.
We regulate per zoning classification, so that would be my assumption, but without knowing who or where, I'd be happy to look further into that particular situation.
Okay, and you, you answered my other questions. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Madam Chair, there is one other common thing that comes before the board in Mr. Stonehill's example, which is a family subdivision request, and so it may not be a special exception request, although that may be a type of, there's, there's two types of ways to amend. One is called a variance, and one is where you actually change the usage, and then one is giving, we don't change the usage, change the shape or boundary of the property, and then there's another, which is the usage, and that's special exception. But there's also a family subdivision, which also runs with the land and allows, and I think I've described that before, where it's commonly retained, it makes sense on a rural road, nobody goes down the road, it doesn't impact anybody but positively, and they say, you own 20 acres, of course, you can have your mother live there. But sometimes those, when there's a negative impact, go to the Planning Commission, neighbors do come, and it's a smaller lot, or it may not be, or there's a negative impact. But it may have been a family subdivision request as opposed to an SEP. We, we used to get those fairly often as well.
We, we still do. This particular property is Zoned Agricultural A1, which has a minimum lot size of 10 acres, so a family division would not apply to this property.
Thank you, Mr. Britton. They know I'm in favor of it because I understand the position they're in, and I, in my little notes that I've handwritten but haven't sent to you yet, I have, that's one thing to relook at this, to maybe loosen up our restrictions on some of this stuff, but that's just something our staff can look at, but I, I'm in support of it.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right. I'm making a, a motion to approve case number 20-06-E02, special exception permit, request made by Carolyn McGee for a manufactured home in addition to the primary dwelling for occupancy by the lot owner's immediate family for reasons of hardship, owned by Brian L. or Carolyn McGee, Tax Map 33, Parcel 135F, 11.01 acres, Zoned A1, Limited Agricultural District.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye. Congratulations. Enjoy your time together. All right. Next up is action item, County Administration requests to procure agricultural services.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On August 18, 2020, the Board of Supervisors was given a presentation detailing the Recreation and Advisory Committee's recommendations for the use of Roseland Road property. During the briefing, the county identified a need for architectural services to design a facility...
During the briefing, the county identified a need for architectural services to design a facility and develop an estimate of the cost to renovate the facility. Considering this, the Board directed the county administrator to retain a firm to provide these services. We solicited firms and received a proposal from John J. Berger, an architect who has done previous work with the county engineer's office. Mr. Berger proposes to perform the architecture work for a fee not to exceed $5,000. In keeping with state code, the tax to include his members who represent the hotel industry and other travel-related fields has been consulted prior to making this funding request. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Supervisors appropriate $5,000 from the tourism fund to retain architectural services for the Roseland Road property and authorize the county administrator to execute a contract with John J. Berger, subject to the county attorney's approval.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Discussion item, Harry Nice Bridge Pier.
Yes, Madam Chair. This was added to the agenda at the chairman's request. I'm sure that many of the members of the board are fully aware that there is an interest from some members of the board regarding requesting that the governor of Virginia and the governor of Maryland retain a portion of the Harry Nice Bridge that's going to be destroyed on the King George County side of the river and allow the county to utilize that asset as a pier and a tourist attraction. I was going to turn it over to the chair and basically gain a consensus from the board if they wanted us to move forward. Were we seeking that correspondence or what direction the board would like for the staff to take?
Thank you, Dr. Young. I'm going to go down the line because we all have different opinions on it. Mr. Stonehill?
My opinion is to go ahead and let's get some information from Maryland and see if that's something that's even feasible. I've done a lot of looking into different piers and bridges, and it seems almost every old bridge that I have come across in all the different states has been kept for a fishing pier. And with COVID and everything, there are people, you know, constantly, all day long, coming and saying, "Hey, where's there a place to fish?" And just recently I had four people come and they came all the way down from Front Royal the other day looking for a place to go fishing. And they came to Wayside and just to find, Wayside was closed. They did not go to our website, but they had gone to other travel websites or Yelp, and they said that was a definitely place to go, you know, a place to go fishing, that it was still open. Maryland has done this a couple of times, and it seems like Governor Hogan, I sent you all an article about the last bridge that they did. And the folks that I have talked to in the two different states so far, I mean, they were all very enthusiastic about the idea. So I would like to, you know, get Dr. Young and staff to get a letter going to Governor Hogan and just to find out if he has any interest in doing this at all. And if they don't, well, we don't have to have any more conversations about it. And if they do, well, obviously there's a lot of logistics that need to be worked out and we can move forward from there. But without, you know, Hogan's interest, I mean, there's no point in me even going forward.
Thank you. Ms. Kupka?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Mr. Stonehill. Let's send a letter, see what Maryland thinks about it, if they're willing to consider it or not. We did mention it to Captain Copeland when we met with him. He would be interested in learning more about it. He said he fished himself growing up in Florida, I guess, and said that, sure, there might be some, you know, security issues that we would need to look at, but he agreed with what we suggested to him at the time was, let's send this letter to Maryland. And that way, nobody's wasting time doing studies and we're not having our county attorney doing a bunch of research into different agreements and this, that, and the other thing. If it's no, if it's a hard no upfront, we're good. We're done.
Mr. Bush?
So first off, I love the idea, but I do have concerns. One would be, I know other localities have done this, especially in Maryland, but our scenario would be a little different because we would be Virginia with a Maryland asset. Can a state deed an asset to another state? Or moreover, an individual locality within that state? So that would be a legal question that I would probably want to get answered before we even sent a letter to the governor. I'd like to know if this is even legally possible. Aside from that, if it was possible, we would have to figure in what is our plan. We were talking about maintenance earlier this evening. This would be a tremendous asset that would cost a lot of money to maintain. So even if we got it, it's not just like we get a concrete two-lane fishing pier and it's cut off at the end. We're going to have to engage on aids to navigation. So this is going to be an ATON issue. So you're going to have to put lights, you're going to have to put buffers out around this thing. That's going to happen so a boat doesn't run into it or a barge, depending how far out this thing's going to go. We're going to have to maintain the integrity of the structure throughout its life. And then whenever it does eventually either degrade or the county 30, 40 years from now gets rid of it, there's going to be a cost that's now our burden to demolish it at that point. So these are things that I would like to consider before we just said, hey, we want a fishing pier. Do I love the idea? Absolutely. I even had delusions of grandeur that maybe we can contact the Navy and they can get something out of mothballs and bring it out there and put it at the end of this pier like a museum, like you see at the Navy Yard. I mean, we got a huge Navy base. That's something that I would love to see. But I would need to get these- I'd like to get some figures on what is this going to cost us, not only initially, but down the road and which is eventually going to become a recurring maintenance cost. And then on top of that, I'd like to find out if it's even legally possible for this state-to-state transaction to take place. That's all I have.
Mr. Burton?
The, I don't know the precise, but years ago, we did litigate all the way to the Supreme Court and I was involved on the issue of the use of the waters. And so it was extremely interesting because we argued the 1685 letter from George Washington regarding the Potomac Compact. That's what it came down to. And it was litigated because we and Fairfax had use of the waters. And Maryland was saying that we had to get permits for our wastewater treatment discharge into the water and that we had to buy the permit and that we had to meet their effluent levels. And we contested that under the 1685 compact, which says that while Maryland owns the waters, Virginia has the use of the waters. I previously spoke some months ago with the chairman about, chairwoman about this, and I think it will be a complex issue. I doubt that the sovereign state of Maryland will be deeding any of their land. It may require even a state border adjustment. So, but that isn't, I don't think, the end of the inquiry. There's long-term leases, there is maintenance agreements and have you. What would happen would be, we would need to get authority, if the governor is interested in doing it, we would need to get authority from the Attorney General on how to do that in the state of Maryland and the Commonwealth of Virginia on accepting it. There needs to be public hearings regarding that. Then we would typically enter into a maintenance agreement like we would for any wastewater discharge port or intake for the use of the water, taking the water in. There would be patrolling and law enforcement issues. As Mr. Stonehill is well aware, we would probably enter into what's called an interjurisdictional mutual aid agreement where we cross-deputize because I doubt that Maryland is going to want to run over on a boat from the other side every single time there's a fight. There is a permitting issue, and Maryland currently takes the position, Mr. Stonehill is actually an expert in this, so he can correct me, that when you're in the waters of Maryland, you need to get Maryland fishing permits. And now that may be saltwater and you may not have to, I'm not sure. There will definitely be environmental issues that typically Maryland will require a bond or an indemnity for the decay of the bridge. Don't know what it's made of. There will be what they call decommissioning or dismantling bond, which will need to be put up for the life of it. There will be typically a liability insurance coverage or indemnity provision. Then they'll have the maritime and structure issues, which will go along, Mr. Bush has talked about, the maritime addressing boat collisions and underwater collisions. And then there'll probably be lighting issues. So those are the things, are the complexities. But from a legal standpoint, I don't see any impediment to doing it effectively, sort of like the Hong Kong 99-year lease. But I doubt that there will be any deeding based on the litigation that we were involved in that went to the United States Supreme Court on the use alone of the waters because Maryland, you know, is going to get paid to do it and they're going to, and they're going to want to permit anything that they can. And I think that if they were to deed something into the water, it would actually change the boundaries of Virginia and the boundaries of the state of Maryland. So I doubt you're going to get an opinion from the Attorney General that that's okay. So you'd probably be talking about a deeding issue, but I don't see anything that stands in the way of getting the preliminary issue that Mr. Stonehill brought up, which is, are you interested in doing it or not? I think we can find a way to do it. It just may be, may be easy, but it may be something you don't want to get into. But that we definitely, if Maryland wants to leave a part of that bridge there, we can find a way to do it.
Mr. Granger?
So I guess what my question's going to be, what would be the, what would we be asking Governor Hogan in particular? Are we asking him, are you just willing to leave a piece of the, is this just kind of a probe, asking, is this something you'd be willing to entertain? Are we actually saying, we would like you to leave this in place and we'd like to start this process? What are we really asking here?
That was one of my concerns because I don't want to go ask for things if we're not really entertaining to go through the whole process. And so what kind of letter, Mr. Stonehill, Ms. Kupka?
I could just answer a couple of those questions. It's not something, I don't think that King George or the state of Virginia is going to end up with a fishing pier. I mean, it clearly belongs to Maryland. As Mr. Britain said, they're not going to give that up and it would be, you know, almost impossible to get that done. There's a bridge there right now. Virginia uses it. People go back and forth. And, you know, there's two other, you know, cases in Maryland where Maryland said, yeah, let's do this. They have a great fishing pier. It's a big draw for those areas. One's in a state park. It's going to help them out as much as it is going to help King George out. I mean, look at Wayside Park right now. Everybody that's at Wayside Park comes from Maryland. Maryland doesn't have a fishing pier. So anywhere on the Potomac River that somebody wants to now go fishing, they're going to have to come across their new bridge, pay their toll to come to our county here in King George to go fishing on a pier which belongs to Maryland and it sticks out into Maryland waters. So it's going to benefit them just as much as it's going to benefit anybody because there's no place on the Maryland side to go fishing either. You can't go to Aqualand. You can't go to, you know, Lower Sea or Bar. I mean, there's nowhere that on the Maryland shoreline that their people can go fishing. So like I said, it would be a win-win situation for both states. ATON stuff, the bridge is not marked right now at all. There's no mark, just the center span in the main channel. There's no markings. There's no lights. There's no reflectors. There's no anything. So I don't know why they would have to go ahead and put anything else on it.
Because it's going to be dead end. So it's going to be jetting out into a navigable waterway. The bridge is a continuous structure with a ship channel that goes through it. This is going to be dead end, so now it's actually an obstruction in a navigable waterway. That's why they would have to have ATON on there. I could tell you that from experience.
Well, you know, then for commercial fishing gear, pound nets and all that kind of stuff, they're not, you know, they're not marked. There's an area that's on a chart that shows the, you know, of where the locations could be. But obviously there would be lights on it anyways if you're going to go fishing at night or reflectors. But I don't really think that's a huge deal. Enforcement, but the Potomac River Compact between the two states, it's enforceable by Maryland DNR or the Virginia Marine Police, which is the law enforcement arm of Virginia Marine Resources Commission. So they can obviously go and take care of any type of enforcement issues. Or the King George Sheriff's Office sign an agreement with Charles County and get back into their MOU about law on both sides of the river. I know that they're looking into that right now, Mr. Burton, I think, in reference to Fairview Beach. So I think the enforcement problem, you know, obviously there's going to be people there. It'll be a little bit busier, but I don't think that's a major setback at all. But like I said before, I think for both states and obviously for us, it would be a huge draw and a huge benefit. And like I said, you know, Maryland doesn't have a place to go fish and they can't do one on their side. So I would just, you know, like I said before, write a letter and just say, hey, you know, what do you think about doing something like the Bill Burton State Park or this other bridge? And just see what they're interested in. You know, I've talked to, you know, people over at Potomac River Fisheries and Virginia Marine Resources, and they all said, that's a great idea if you can make it happen.
Ms. Kupka, do you have some? I have quite a few questions.
So I agree with Mr. Stonehill. To offer this here would provide recreational water access for the purposes of fishing, which we lost when we lost the chunk of Wayside Park that we did. And I apologize for saying this, but the Roseland Road property is not an adequate substitute in my mind for that recreational access to the river. This could provide or alleviate some of that and also keep in mind, keep some of the traffic over here away from that neighborhood down Roseland Road because we know they don't want that traffic down there. So I would just ask you to consider that and look at the big picture here as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I have a big picture on it too. One is, my concern is, we've stated that it's Maryland's water, Maryland's bridge, Maryland does the fishing permits. What does it give King George if we have to pay to maintain it and pay to upkeep it and pay, pay, pay? But Maryland gets everything from it. That's one of my concerns. And that would be something we have, we would have to address with the governors of both states. Another question, and Mr. Clark put it up, there was a plan in 1984 when we acquired Wayside Park through the Federal Parks to Land Program, and they had an elaborate, that I didn't even know existed, plan. And Mr. Britain, this is a question I have for you. If, when we have the ability to develop that park after the bridge is built, could we not build a structure ourselves as a fishing pier jetting off of Wayside Park? Same issue probably. I'm just asking that question.
That's the, that would be a corollary to what use of the Potomac waters means. Typically, piers, however, a floating pier would be a good argument based on piers that are, have a foundation or drilled into the earth, probably not, because I don't think that we could make the argument use of the waters includes sinking pilings. However, a floating pier, probably. But I think based on the litigation that I was involved in with the other counties, that would be a semi-permanent intrusion into the sovereignty, probably, as opposed to drawing out water or giving, putting in effluent, but I don't know. But I seriously doubt you'd be able to drill into their land.
What about private piers? Because there's private piers that jet out into the Potomac.
Yes, oh yes, and they're permitted. And that's exactly right. And they're permitted and they're permitted and they're permitted by Maryland.
Okay. So those private piers aren't even assessed for tax purposes on the property in King George?
I don't know the answer to that. I-
I mean, if it's permitted through Maryland and it's in Maryland, then that can't be considered an improvement on a property for King George tax purposes?
You, I agree with your argument. I do not know how they, what makes sense doesn't always follow the tax rules and regulations. But I don't, I just simply don't know that. You know, I know how it works. But they are permitted, and that is exactly the issue that Maryland was requiring us to permit. that Maryland was requiring us to permit. And of course, when they lost the case, they lost everything because once the Supreme Court says you don't need any permit, you stop paying for it. So, but, but that, that would be an issue of whether it's the use of the water. But yes, those piers are permitted in Maryland. And I assume, Mr. Stonehill could tell you, I don't know, if you're standing on the end of your own Maryland permitted pier and fishing, I don't know what permit you need, but probably something from Maryland.
Right, that is one question I had. Another question is, we haven't fully broached, I know we, you guys have, or Ms. Kupka and Mr. Stonehill actually talked to the commander and we'll be talking to him, Mr. Bush and I will be talking tomorrow to him, and say, like the idea, but my, my only is still going back to security and how do we get people effectively over the new bridge to be able to access it safely? And the security concerns from the base with all those people that are possibly milling about in that area that puts them a little closer to the base and being able to go around the fence on the shoreline? These are just concerns that I would, would have about the bridge and the cost of it and maintaining it. I did look up a couple of bridges in Florida that they did do this with and in the end, they regretted their decision because the upkeep in the price to maintain the old bridge became quite expensive and the locality had to shoulder that. Now they're stuck with a bridge that cost them quite a bit of money to maintain. Those are my concerns, but I have a suggestion for a letter and I don't know if this is possible. If we sent a lever, letter to Governor Hogan telling him this is, this is an idea we were pursuing, but an idea of pursuing not 100% we, we're going to do this. And what, what are, what are your requirements? Would you even be willing to entertain it? But making it known that we're not 100% behind this and committing ourselves to something.
That'd be, I would be amenable to that. I just don't want to give them the impression that, because I'm not, I just don't have enough information to know whether this would make sense. And so I don't want to go to Maryland or Governor Hogan and say, hey, this, this is something we want to do. Like Ms. Bender said, what I really like to understand is, are you willing to consider it? If you are, what are your expectations for us in this, in this kind of relationship? What would be, we be required to do? So we could assess it accurately and if that's what we're really looking at, then, then I, we can ask. But that, that's kind of information I need.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you. So, so going back to initially what I said at first, I love the idea. If we can find a way to pay for it, I'm all for sending a letter and seeing if Maryland would even entertain this, but I would want to engage what, not only what would we have to do to appease Maryland, what would Maryland allow or what would be permissible for us to do to be able to plan for long-term maintenance, things of that nature? Because if it's just, here you go, now it's your liability without, with all those unknowns, I, I can't jump on that, especially with the infrastructure needs we already have in the county. I can't obligate something to that. Now, I like the idea. I like maybe even going a little further and enhancing this beyond a fishing pier eventually, if that's things Maryland would allow us to do. But I'm, I'm not for maintaining a fishing pier where licenses are purchased to go into the purse of Maryland, where we're restricted in enforcement on it, that we have to operate within the bounds of an MOU with Charles County. You know, I want to make sure it's a win-win and that we get a return on our investment. So even if we get this bridge for free, let's say it's just, hey, yeah, you can use it or you can keep it and you can access it from King George. If we, if we have to take on another fiscal responsibility or a liability, then I really don't see a return on investment. So I'm, I'm for sending the letter, but I'd like to know, not only what do we need to do, what would they allow for us to do? If those things could be addressed, I say go for it.
And how much they'll give us of it, you know, like how much of the span?
I just don't want to lock into it. You know what I'm saying?
I hear you and I know we're short on cash. I don't think that Maryland's going to say, here's a bridge, now you need to upkeep it, it belongs to them. And, you know, I think if, if we have to do anything, maybe trash or, you know, parking or something on our side of the bridge, but like I said, the, the bridge belongs to Maryland, they're not going to give it to us. I don't think we can up, you know, do any maintenance, it's not going to cost us to do any maintenance on a bridge that belongs to Maryland. So I'm thinking that if Maryland wants to do something like this, they're going to shoulder the cost of that. And, you know, it's going to bring people across the bridge, it's going to bring people into dog, and it's going to bring people to the gas stations. People are going to buy more cigarettes, they're going to buy our cheap gas, they're going to go to Walmart to go get fishing supplies. You know, it's just, you talk about tourism and there are people, you know, there are people that, you know, the, the big, the bridges down in Florida and stuff, obviously, we're not Florida, but, I mean, there are people that they plug up all the hotels, they have fishing tournaments, they have everything there. It's a huge draw for those. Yeah, we have a little bit of an issue because of jurisdictional boundaries, but, you know, I really think this is just an idea and if Maryland is interested in it, I, I think they're going to shoulder the, shoulder the weight on it and shoulder any type of, you know, of maintenance. I mean, I just think, you know, it's a, it's a draw and it just happens you have to come to King George to get onto their bridge.
So I hear what you're saying, but there, that bridge goes across to Maryland too. They could very well leave the span on their side and just make it a Charles County asset instead of having to deal with jurisdictions across the river.
The only problem there is you're about 100 feet off the water right there where you're 12 feet off the water on our side.
Depends how long they want to make this pier.
So again, I'm willing to at least send a letter, but to me, really, the key is to make sure that we're not just committing to anything right now. I think it might be a little optimistic to think that Maryland will just foot the bill for maintenance. You know, I think, we can ask.
We can ask them out to dinner, we're just not proposing.
I would like to understand what, what their responsibilities would be and what they're, they would expect our responsibilities to be.
That's a fair way to put it.
So yes, I'm in favor of a letter that would go down that route saying, what, what do you, are you willing to consider this? If you are, can you please help us understand what you are willing to do and what you would expect the state of Virginia to do and what you would expect the locality of King George to do, just so we can better understand, so we can make an informed decision? Yeah, and what we would, what we would be allowed to do.
Dr. Young, did you want, Mr. Britton? Does that sound like a fair letter?
We're just discussing details.
Okay. Are you guys minimal?
So, just to be clear, our correspondence to Maryland, the governor of Maryland and Virginia, particularly Maryland, would be that we are exploring the possibility and that no funding has been committed to the project. This is in the preliminary exploratory stages only, and that is all we were looking for here tonight.
Right, we're just trying to, you know, so I don't want to send, and I've said this before, I don't want to send a letter and they think right away we're committed to it. This is an exploring and just saying that, you know, we're interested, what are the, what do we have to do, what are the parameters? Mr. Granger said it better than I did there, but.
Sure, but there's no sense in, you know, having more discussions. I know Mr. Stonehill has talked to a bunch of folks, we talked to the base commander. Let's just send the letter and then if we get a no, we're done and, and we just move on.
That's fine.
And we're all willing to do that, so we're just looking for a letter.
Right, I know, we, it was a discussion item, we had a discussion. And, and I appreciate Ms. Kupka and Mr. Stonehill bringing it because it is a tourism opportunity. And there are a lot of people that like to fish in King George and Maryland. Heck, when I was crossing over the river this weekend at the Bay Bridge, there was a lot of people on the jetty there fishing and they were all, lots of people there fishing. So it is an interest, especially in COVID, a lot of people revived interest in doing outdoor activities. So we have a consensus to send a letter then. So, Dr. Young?
Thank you very much for bringing it to our attention. Next up is our county administrators' report.
Madam Chair, originally, I didn't have a report for tonight's meeting, but I've been giving a lot of thought to our initial conversation regarding maintenance and courthouses and everything like that. I first wanted to apologize for my confusion understanding first Mr. Granger's question and then not understanding Ms. Kupka's question, so basically trying to wrap my head around the direction that the board wants to go. So please forgive me for the confusion on that. And I also gave some more thought about you all's discussion regarding preventative maintenance. And I always operate it under the belief that if my board doesn't know what our staff is doing, then that's my fault and that means that we're not doing enough reporting. And I'd really like your idea, Madam Chair, about maintaining some type of report that comes to the board, having a discussion about what we're doing to take care of our facilities. And my most immediate thought is, thanks to Ms. Kupka and Ms. Bender, you all asked that general properties and the rest of our departments actually maintain a report monthly with the rest of our departments. And I was trying to wrap my head around, well, what would that report would look like? Well, I can't think of a better platform to use than actually have a formal preventive maintenance portion on the general properties report and they can have, tell the board exactly what they've done, you know, throughout the month to take care of the facility. So I'll be having a discussion with the general properties director, that'll be maintaining the board report monthly and then we can ensure that everybody has a shared understanding of the effort that is being taken to make sure that we are protecting our assets in King George County. Other than that, that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Young. I would like to get a motion for adjournment, but one thing I would like to say is, we have a list of people on our boards and commissions we need to fill, so, including myself. So let's make a, an effort to see if we can find, to fill the terms on our boards that we have vacancies for. And with that, can I have a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn until Thursday, September 3rd at 6:30 PM in the boardroom.
Second.
Any other discussion?